And we go to the next paper, paper number 41. It has ten years. And that's on page number 41. Let us count the teams actually. The contract is the C.A. Department of Direct Urban Services to execute the first contract on a twin city man test with fantastic white vehicles. Thank you. For the purpose of changing the towing cars for the towing of the make believe parked vehicles from $65 to $95. Thank you for this area presentation. You know, although we've got this presentation before, could you just in that shall explain how we got to where we are and what this paper is about?
Certainly. Good evening, President and Council members. This paper is for contract modification of the towing contract, which is already in effect. And the purpose of the modification is to make the contract resemble the intention of the parties and mutual agreement of the city as well as the vendor, which would raise the rate of the towing, rate of the standard to the towing rate from $65 to $95.
And the intent of Councilwoman, this paper was passed was that that they would increase to $95.
Thank you, Madam President.
All other questions? Is there anyone from the public who speak in favor of this paper? Anyone from the public who speak in opposition?
Here.
Got it.
My name is Silver Purse Senior Assistant Secretary of Virginia, one of the few and the proud, probably the only person in the room that has reviewed the 127 original page paper that you all passed in April of this year. I'm speaking in opposition to ordinance 2010-230, which proposes to retroactively raise the fee for towing cars from public property from $65 to $95. Seabirds Towing, uh, excuse me, on April 12th, Council approved the contract with the $65 rate. The contractor Seabirds Towing signed the same contract. It was actually a precondition enumerated in the RFP, the Request for Proposals. City received three and reviewed two. I'll read these revisions to RFP Part IV, Special Conditions. Section 5.2, all city tows will be free. Section 5.1, the $60.5 rate for tows is currently set by city code. We anticipate, let me tell you, this is from a contract specialist Tyrone Davis, and this is page 18 of the attachments to the April ordinance, and this is at page number two dated May 19, 2009, again, from Tyrone Davis. And he writes, "The $65 rate for tows is currently set by city code. We anticipate the rate will increase in the near future. At such time, this contract will be modified to allow the vendor to collect a higher rate." And this is interesting here, it's a condition of the RFP. Vendors need to bid based on a ratio that they would pay to the city per tow. Currently, the city gets $15 from the $65 tow. And Seabirds made a better offer. They said, "Well, we'll do it for $17. And if you raise the rate in the future, we'll give you 10 percent of that." And as an example, they used $30 instead. That city will get an additional $3, bringing up the total to $20 for a car that goes to the city's general revenue from cars towed from public property, like, for example, for street cleaning. In the supplemental report issued by the Towing Advisory Board, they wrote that they had spent months computing the value of the contract. The Towing Board admitted that they were ultimately unable to determine the true value of the contract after months of research because the city's statistical data was incomplete regarding proceeds generated from towing. And here's a quote, "Likewise, it was hard to determine how much revenue was generated for the vendor, especially in instances of vehicle accidents where the vendor is not required to provide a profit share to the city. I also did not see any mention of profit sharing on the sale of auctioned autos. If you don't know the value of the contract, how can you set a fair and reasonable rate?" The problem with this paper is that it seeks to legitimize and abet criminal misdeeds. Why are you seeking to exempt these people when they have broken the law? Your body sets the rate of towing, not them. There are two parties responsible. Seabirds, because they began charging $95 at the beginning of June this year without receiving authorization from the City Council.
You have 30 seconds.
And the city is responsible. Both the Council and the Mayor's Administration, through its carelessness, lack of follow-up through and/or gross incompetence, you all neglected to raise the towing through the normal legislative process by ordinance. And finally, in the proposal from Seabirds attached to the April ordinance under the section entitled Financial Arrangements, they will give you $17. They state that they will give you $17 for every citation for towing with a $65 rate. I'm wrapping up. They also wrote, "Should the citation rate increase, you'll get 10 percent." On the following page of their proposal, it says, it lists the charges for parking tickets and citations, $65. This is a contract they approved. You all approved too, and you should not abet criminal activity. This deserves investigation. I encourage everyone to sue the city or the contract.
Thank you. Okay, back to Council for discussion. Charlie, you have the...
I wouldn't like to just make one comment. I think everyone, at least in my perspective, when we were briefed on this, all of us sat in here for $95. There was never any discussion of cars at $65. It wasn't what was right. It was paperwork, it was an argument, and I appreciate the citizens bringing this forward. But at the end of the day, I think the contract we established with the towing company was at $95. We should be forwarded with a sort of success rate.
Thank you, Mr. Cal. Other comments?
I agree with you. We owe you all this $95 rate. Wasn't any questions about it. I think what you do, I think it's a good thing, and I think we should improve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cal. Then...
I agree this wasn't ever said. I'm actually very against it. It wasn't my favorite phrase, the price of $95. And anytime that there is a mistake, I think the tie goes to the runner. In this case, the runner is the citizen of the city, and they're involved in this.
Okay. Ms. Chan?
Just wanted to thank all the witnesses. Also, the Seabirds here have their promise to their subcontractors that they would give them a raise, and they did do that. So that's another thing we must recall, and I think we should do that.
And now, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Madam President. I think if the shoe were on the other foot, the city that had signed the contract to, that said $65 on it, that there would be a human crime. People would be lined up out the door, wanting that $30 back. And because we're being a proud contractor, I would hope that there had been a good faith that would try and set this right. For a contract that they signed, absolutely the city beared in this. And there's an egg on our face, no question about it. Fact is, this contract, sign that same piece of paper. And it's troubling to me that there hasn't been that effort to try and see what we could do to make that right. I did vote to increase the fee, so I probably don't have the authority that Samuel's does on this issue, but nonetheless, I'm going to vote with him on this. And I would hope that we could try and do better relative to the paperwork on this. This was absolutely sloppy and inexcusable. But if the city, if it were legal for the city to pay this money back, I would be voting for us to get the money back. The fact is that it's not legal for the city to do that. We made inquiry with the city attorney, and we're told that flat out. So unfortunately, we can't make the right pair of parties. They could make the right, but they don't intend to, so therefore, I'm voting against this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Any comments? I'd just like to say that I agree with Mr. Gilbert in that I think this was mistaken by Mr. Samuel's in terms of what was in the contract. But clearly, the intent of Council, the intent of City Administration, and the intent of the Seabirds was to begin on June 1st, charging $95. And so, is everybody entitled to one mistake here? And so, for that, I am going to give this paper. Oh, Mr. Cal, you're voting on page 41. Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Yob?
Aye.
Vice President Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Newell?
Aye.
Mr. Trem?
Aye.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
President Robinson?
Aye.
That paper was submitted. Thank you, Madam President. Let's go to paper number 45. Ordnance 2010, that 230, full process C.A. executed as an assent, persons and assumption agreement to acquire all of the real property, personal property, and other assets of Broad Street, C.A.
Good evening, Department of Commerce, Director of Finance. And I'm happy to report that all the teeth and eyes have been crossed at this point, and we're ready to go. We intend with your action, assuming it is possible, we will sell debt tomorrow, which is close in anticipated, on the number 30. And I appreciate your patience as we go through the common issues.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? All right. Anyone from the audience to speak in favor of this paper? Anyone who speaks in opposition? Back to Council. All of us, Madam President. Come to the burden of an item or without an chain, yes, you can put it in. Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Newell?
Aye.
Mr. Trem?
Aye.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
And President Robinson?
Aye.
That paper was submitted. Now, you can now move on to camera 43. Resolution 2010, and it's on page 71, to support the rest of the statute honoring Maggie Walker. Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Gilbert, have you some free explanation?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Paper in this paper, following up on a citizen-led effort to honor Ms. Walker. She led by Melvin Johnson, President of the Alumni Association, Maggie Walker, in an appropriate way to honor her. Mr. Johnson led the effort to get a stand for Ms. Walker. She is someone to be revered, a real pioneer, the first woman to pay a bank as well as for that marathon as well. So certainly someone that has had a impressive history. And Ms. Walker said once to have big dreams for our city and to not have small dreams because the small dreams aren't able to inspire passions of the people. And so, I would ask us to dream big and to appropriately honor her with a statue. And this is something that we can take to Governor and others at the state level, and we work for this, and we give a campaign to raise private dollars for this statue. This will all be private donations, and we want to support that effort with this resolution. And I ask my colleagues to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. So anyone in the House who speaks in favor?
Good evening, I'm City Councilwoman. My name is Jonathan Jones. I'm the President of Maggie Walker Alumni Association, and also the President and the founder of the Maggie Walker Statue. Only other thing I ask the City Council, I would like to see if you can get that part of the road turned into Maggie Walker Parkway for short and long. And also, in support of y'all votes, I'm not buying votes, but this is a button to support of Maggie Walker Statue. I want every City Councilperson to give one tonight. You know, this is something that's been well overdue. I've gotten a lot of support now. I've got people now that want to donate money. Joe Morrissey, he, you know, sent money, and, you know, it's open. I mean, you know, this will do a lot for Richmond. It really will, you know, just the tourism, and all of a sudden, we've got the Centennial coming, the Silver Walker. I mean, this would do a lot for Richmond. So I would like everybody's support, and I'm going to try to get surrounding counties hand open, the rightful pile of town, Petersburg. I'm going to get everybody involved in this. So I'm in support of it, and I hope that everybody on Council's supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. We appreciate it. Anyone to speak in opposition?
Hello, Silver Purse Senior Assistant Secretary of Virginia. I'm not so much speaking in opposition, similar to the time when you all showed your support for the Maggie Walker stamp. I had to express my reservation about the fact that the term African American had been removed from the language of Council's endorsement for the stamp. And you all actually amended the language based on my comments, surprisingly. But my apprehension here today with this monument, you know, I think she's a black woman, totally great person for Richmond to recognize through a memorial. My concern, though, is the sighting of the monument at the intersection of Adams and Broad. There's a tree right there where the monument is being proposed to be located. And I don't think a tree should be killed for this monument. As much as I don't want to recognize her, I don't think that's an appropriate way to... That tree may have been there when she was alive, you know? That's kind of crazy to think about. And there's so little green space on Broad Street, we actually need more. What I would like to urge the Council to do, do the same thing you did at Lombardi and Broad Street, near the Sewers, Sewers Factory. You guys closed off that little, it was a cut through right there, and then it's a little crummy. It wasn't really much of a park. But you guys allowed the person that renovated that property to incorporate that part of the street in their parking lot. Why not also take that little beer triangular property where nothing is right now? I've never been anything there the whole time I lived in Richmond. And use that triangular part and close off the street and make it maybe a Maggie Walker Park. It's, it'd be a pocket park, no doubt. But this would be something that would keep, maintain the tree and honor Richmond. Thank you for attaining comment.
Thank you. All right, back to Council. Any other discussion? Mr. Cal?
I want to thank Mr. Jones, who ran the office job, and he's probably come a long way. And I know you were very proud of the success and the accomplishments that have been made, and we would be commended highly with all of those who have supported you. I'd like to be a patron of this paper, and I would also like for us to give some consideration to the recognition that Mr. personally, you know, made it revised for that, whether or not, that would be a traffic issue or not. But certainly, there is some concern as there is a tree there, and if that is a possibility, that that option is available, I certainly would ask that we at least feel into that as a possibility, and that would give us an opportunity, perhaps, we can gain greater respect and recognition for her. I would support this.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. How does it go?
Well, I certainly thank you, John, for bringing this paper. I can assure you that that tree was not able to sit there. And, but, but to the apartment, Mr. Gilbert, you're very close. She emphatically, with great bellowing, said, "Dream no small dreams." I don't know if you can get that. And it's a matter that we ought to be, in particular, around our children every day, not just our children, because too often we sometimes dream of small. I don't know what's going on with the solid bank, high school, this transition. This woman was wonderful, and we talk about some of the for-profit things that she did, but we rarely talk about what she did to get there. You see, she used a not-for-profit called the Daughter St. Luke to build the infrastructure in order to finance the for-profit businesses, businesses that were on Broad Street where black businesses typically were allowed. And so, it's a lesson, it's a, it's a, it's a lesson for us today. It's a real model for us today. And that is that we ought to be building not-for-profits, or wealth-building infrastructure in the black community. Our businesses survive some way, form, or fashion, I don't know how it happens, in a business climate of severe risk every day. How they manage to maintain, I don't know. Too many of them don't. There's the risk of saying, "Oh, I forgot you." There's a risk of saying, "Oh, I don't have you on my list." There's a risk implicit in what we do with city mechanisms and processes that risk the law for black and other minority businesses that we have had to live with for years. And so, it takes not-for-profits oftentimes to help reduce that climate of risk in order that individual wealth building can take place. She understood it, and she left us a model on how to do that, and it would do us well in the community. So no, I support that, and I'd be included as co-author.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Yes, I would like to thank Mr. Gilbert, his efforts, and Mr. Gilbert. I support the paper, and certainly, as we look at the site for replacement of the statue, and we're mindful of all manner of things, including whether or not the tree was there at that point. But I definitely support, definitely support, and we'll go on to paper.
Thank you, Mr. Cal. Any other discussion? All questions, Madam President?
I'm sorry, none. I was just having a side of our Mr. Gilbert. Sounds like you should be... I'm also a person favorite of this paper as a co-author, and was excited with what this conference came to me with this proposal, and I appreciate the, apparently, its tireless effort to honor and remember Ms. Walker in numerous ways. I'm also excited that it's in the mission, because anything that brings courage to the cities would, and city Richmond certainly fantastic city of our whispers in the second district, we're planning a visit, second meeting. It is a wonderful, wonderful idea. This paper does not dictate where the statue will go, the statue will go. It simply suggests the location to determine whether or not it would be appropriate to go there. We may have many miles ahead to travel on this, but I am excited we'll take it for itself.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel. A member of David Tree. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all questions, Madam President? Councilwoman on item 42. Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Newell?
Aye.
Mr. Trem?
Aye.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
And President Robinson?
Aye.
That paper was submitted. Thank you, Madam President. And it's for number 43, which is unbelieved to be amended? Yes, we have our motion to amend and put on that paper. The 2010-234, to endorse the legislative proposals, set forth within the 2011 city Richmond legislative priorities, put it in the General Assembly. The proposed amendment to that paper is followed, page 1, line 5, after the word "assembled," the lead symbol, and the serve of comma, after the quotation mark, following the word "assembled," and serve the phrase as amended. Page 1, line 17, after the word "assembled," and serve the phrase as amended. Mr. Newell, would you make the motion to amend that paper as read?
Sure.
So what I'm making, motion to amend that paper. Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Newell?
Aye.
Mr. Trem?
Aye.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
And President Robinson?
Aye.
The amended papers are ready. Thank you, Madam President. Is anybody within the audience who can give in favor of this paper? Any composition?
Here. Hello, my name is Silver Purse Senior. First, I'd like to say that this is the sham process. You all have already presented this legislative agenda to Richmond General Assembly delegation a week and a half ago on November 11th at the Hilton Garden Inn at 7:30 in the morning. You all do not include the public in the crafting of legislative agendas. And, you know, I'm a big advocate of people having more power in their government and politicians, I guess, having less for empowering people. I'm going to give you some of my recommendations. I've given you these in the past, and you have not incorporated them, although they are slightly mirrored in some of your legislation you want to show support for, such as relaxing the Dillon Rule. I want to repeal the Dillon Rule. What the Dillon Rule does is it holds local governments' advantage to state government, and that's an attack on my rights as a citizen, to control my government, to have a government that is, that represents, you know, I don't know, I just think local governments could create better laws than state government. The more localized, the better, the better it will be, and more reflective of the needs of the people of the locality. Secondly, I want you guys to support instant line voting. That's where you vote, vote your preference when there's more than two candidates on the ballot. So you vote your first, second, and third choices. And if no candidate receives over 50% of the vote, the candidate who receives the fewest number of votes is dropped from the ballot, and everyone that had their, that person has their number one choice. You count their number two as their, their preference, and hopefully, you end up with a candidate with over 50% support from the electorate, and, let's see. So people will get to vote for who they prefer rather than the lesser of two evils, because the fact is that both parties are equal, and due to the meaning of corporations and the rich, not regular working people. Thirdly, there's a bill that has been introduced that I would like you all to support. It's bill number 1443, to decriminalize cannabis in Virginia. You know, this, this goes along with some of your support requests. You want to have alternative incarceration. There's no reason to put people in jail for using drugs, it's no more harmful than tobacco or alcohol. Virginia has been growing cannabis in this state since the time of the James Town, side by side with tobacco. So I'll close with this quote from Abraham Lincoln on the topic of prohibition. "Prohibition goes beyond the bounds of reason, in that it tends to control a man's appetite by legislation, makes a crime out of things that are not crimes. A prohibition also strikes below the very principles upon which this government is founded." was founded." And it's a big waste of money to put people in jail for smoking pot. So...
You have thirty seconds. Please begin to survive.
The United States has less than five percent of the world's population, twenty-five percent of its inmates. This is criminal, it's not right, it's immoral, and please, please include citizens in the future in this process of developing this agenda. We, we should be represented in this government too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are back to Councilman Conley.
Madam President.
Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. Well, you can come up with the greatest idea in the room, you're not reflecting it off the citizens in your district, you're doing a disservice. And I believe that we as a council and that I did as a district, we've got a lot of it put, but that hope of best ideas come when you're listening. And I believe that we are. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Once again, I think the, I think citizens have made good recommendations and if we have, I think we should take into advising in the process by which we still have legislative agenda, whether or not there's equal process for citizens to be included in the process. Having said that, I ask for this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Another discussion, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I, I think Mr. Robinson's right there. There were some suggestions or recommendations made just a moment ago from Mr. Persson, who often does come up with good ideas. The problem is, you know, everyone was by name, by number, almost in five minutes, and I don't recall any contact to meet anybody else, saying, "Why don't you include this in your legislative pack?" Would you carry my recommendation? To cause a sham or to call a process a sham after a while gets a little tired. Just gets a little tired and it's a bit short. I don't appreciate it after a while. But at the same time, he makes good ideas and he is an honest about it gentleman, a good man, I know, and doesn't mind telling someone. Of that said, I think it's a bit disingenuous to say with one hand that, that city or local government is government close to the people and then say that we are shamming. Which is, you want the sham represented or you want the government that's close to the people represented? We gotta make a point on that, but I'm saying all that, saying I'm willing to carry your recommendations if they make sense. Great, dog day.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. That heard for some questions?
Council's voted on item forty-three, amended, you wrote on the paper. Mr. Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newble?
Aye.
Mr. Trump?
Aye.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
And President Razziano?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. Please read, are there any motions to amend?
Yes, we have some other papers worth consideration. We have an expedited paper and we also have item number two, three, I want to advise to be amended and continue. We have a preference.
I assume the state expedited right after and you can send the agenda.
Okay. But before, then, let's see. It's item two thousand ten dash two oh nine. Let's see what that is on the agenda. That's actually item number eleven.
These are two, men, two, rest. Okay.
So again, this is item number eleven on two thousand ten dash two oh nine concerning the portable storage units. To amend the code concerning portable storage units with hopes of imposing conditions on portable storage units located on lots with hopes of providing for a general thirty-day appeal period with a ten-day appeal period for certain temporary and seasonal uses for the purpose of requiring plans of development for industrialized buildings located in residential districts and for purposes of applying the terms industrialized building and portable storage unit and for modifying the definition of the term structure. The proposed amendment will read on Mr. Rogers.
Page two, line four. After the number one, delete the sentence. A certificate of zoning compliance should be required prior to a location of a portable storage unit on any lot and insert the sentence for periods up to and including fifteen consecutive days, a portable storage unit may be located on a lot without issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance, only if the owner or occupant of the lot notifies the zoning administrator in writing of the delivery of the unit to the lot located in the day of delivery of the unit to the lot. Page two, line nine. After the number two, delete the sentence. Portable storage units shall not exceed one hundred and fifty square feet in floor area and shall be no greater than eight feet in height and insert the sentences for periods of greater than fifteen consecutive days, a portable storage unit may be located on a lot only after issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. A single certificate of zoning compliance may be approved for a portable storage unit to be located on one lot and subsequently moved to another lot in the city where the same owner or occupant owns or occupies both lots and the unit is for the use of such owner or occupant. Page two, line fifteen. After the number three, delete the sentence. Portable storage units shall not be located within any required yard, provided that upon approval of the zoning administrator, a portable storage unit may be located in a required yard at a location approved by the zoning administrator, when no viable alternative location is available on the lot and insert the sentence. Portable storage units shall be located on a lot no more than the total of twenty-five days in any consecutive twelve-month period for the same owner or occupant of the lot, provided that the portable storage units used by the owner or occupant in conjunction with construction, repair, or renovation activity taking place in the lot shall not be subject to twenty-five day limits. However, such limits shall be removed immediately upon completion of the construction, repair, or renovation activity. Page three, line one. After the number four, delete the sentence. Not more than one portable storage unit shall be located on a lot at the same time, provided that a maximum of two portable storage units may be located on a lot at the same time, where the total floor area of such units does not exceed one hundred and fifty square feet and insert the sentences. No portable storage unit shall exceed one hundred and fifty square feet in floor area and no portable storage unit shall be greater than eight feet in height. More than one portable storage unit may be located on a lot at the same time, provided that the total floor area of all such units on one lot does not exceed two hundred and thirty-four square feet. Page three, line eight. After the number five, delete the sentence. Portable storage units shall be located on the property no longer than ten days in any consecutive twelve-month period for any owner or occupant of the property, unless being used in conjunction with construction or renovation activity taking place on the premises, in which case such portable storage units shall be removed immediately upon completion of the construction or renovation work and insert the sentence. Portable storage units that are subject to approval of a certificate of zoning compliance should not be located within any required yard, provided that upon approval of the zoning administrator, such portable storage units may be located in a required yard at a location approved by the zoning administrator, when the zoning administrator determines that no viable alternative location is available on the lot. Page three, line eighteen. After the word "uteroation", insert the sentence. Identification of business owning a portable storage unit shall be permitted on such unit. Page twenty-two, line fifteen. After the word "include", insert the text. Recipacles used for the collection of food, clothing, household goods, or similar items in conjunction with an activity conducted by a governmental agency or nonprofit organization. Or, page twenty-two, line seventeen. After the word "storage", insert the word "love".
We also have an amendment to item number three, which is on us two thousand ten dash one sixty-nine, to amend the code concerning contracts for non-departmental appropriation for the purpose of requiring that all non-city entities to reach the council appropriates funds in a non-departmental budget entering contracts, enter grant contracts prior to receiving such funds. The proposed amendment to that form is as follows, page one, line five. After the word "that", delete the word "all" on page one, line nineteen. After the word "appropriation", insert the text. Provided provisions of this section shall not apply to line items in the non-departmental budget of the city that have one or more of the following characteristics. One, the line item is an appropriation to or for expenditure by a city agency. Two, the line item is an appropriation to a non-city entity subject to the reported requirements imposed by section two dash eight point three of this code. Three, that the line item is an appropriation to satisfy an obligation under existing contract or the instrument, page three, line three. After the word "that", delete the phrase within nine days after adoption of this ordinance, page three, line five. After the word "enforcement", insert the phrase "for all appropriations effective on or after" to item one, two thousand eleven. Also, item number eight, orders two thousand ten dash one ninety-four. To authorize this restroom use of thirty-eight hundred through thirty-nine sixteen, Old Street Road and four fifteen through five P. Seven Belt Hallmark, with a net two, three standing signs identifying tenants of the properties. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows, page two, line one. After the word "date", delete the date, to line twenty-second. Insert the dates, November seventeen, two thousand ten, and November sixteen. After the year two thousand ten, insert the word "respectfully", page three, line twenty. After the word "hundred", delete the twenty, two twenty-five and insert two hundred. Page three, twenty, line twenty-one. After the word "class", delete the number nine and insert the number seven. Again, I'm going to give a motion to amend item number three, on us two thousand ten dash one sixty-nine to January tenth as read. Item number eight, orders two thousand ten dash one ninety-four, amended and continued to January twenty-four as read. Finally, item number eleven, orders two thousand ten dash two oh nine, to amend that paper as read and continue to be submitted thirteen. Mr. Gilbert, would you make that motion?
So, Madam President.
You're voting on a motion to amend and continue those papers. Mr. Conley?
Question?
Yes, sir.
That includes item number three?
That includes item number three. The papers to be, that's item number...
Item number three, which is two thousand ten dash one sixty-nine.
These are all amended and continued?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're now voting on Councilman Gilbert's motion to amend and continue those papers. Again, item numbers three, eight, and eleven. Mr. Conley, you voted yes? Aye. Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newble?
Aye.
Mr. Trump?
Aye.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
And President Razziano?
Aye.
This paper has all been amended and continued to the dates as read.
Ready?
Along with the other motions, and I'm moving the expedited paper.
Thank you, Madam President. This time we recall, this call, the listeners' speakers, so the decision comment. We remind the speakers that we can submit to speak. Another person in the audience, Ian Redd, over there, Kevin from the mayor's office. If we have a problem with a speech, we can, you know, comment. And so, having said that, I would ask if they submit speaks also, we need to have a discussion and have some offline discussion. So, Madam President, the first speaker?
The first speaker for this evening, Richard Worsom.